Good afternoon. I show it's noon, so we want to be respectful of your time. Thank you for being here today for the first budget session of 2024. So we will turn it over to Mayor Collins to walk us through the budget and or do the preliminary comments and then he's been assisted by the lovely Robin Lockman today. City Treasurer, sorry.
Chairman Aldridge, President Escobal, members of the City Council, you have before you today another balanced budget, this time for the 2025 fiscal year. You guys all know this, but I think it needs to be said that your department heads have done another great job of bringing conservative asks for your consideration. I know the time it takes for them to prepare their budgets and their proposals, and I just want to publicly share my sincere thanks for all their work. In addition, your treasurer and her team have done a masterful job of preparing the budget numbers at each step through the process. Rob and Brendan Amber have spent untold hours doing the budget that you have before you today. All the while, the whole Treasury team has been working on our open gov software conversion. I would just like to, if you guys look through that book, it's beautiful, isn't it? Their efforts have been truly magnificent and I appreciate them, and I could not be prouder of an employee group as we have worked to bring this balanced budget before you today. So let's talk about the numbers. Our proposed general fund revenues for 2025 are seventy one million, six hundred and forty seven thousand, six hundred and forty seven dollars. That's up by five million, four hundred and thirty two thousand, two hundred and seventy seven dollars from the budget we proposed to you last year, which is an eight point two percent increase in our revenues. And while this eight percent revenue increase is encouraging, several of our primary revenue sources are starting to decline, including severance taxes, federal mineral royalties and gas taxes. And we also project that sales taxes will be flat compared to our current fiscal year's actual collections. When we started this budget, our projected revenues just barely covered the increases in expenses that carried over from actions we've taken in the current fiscal year. Things like a well deserved three percent COLA given to our employees, increases in the cost of our property and liability insurance, health and dental insurance, bringing all of our employees up to their salary range minimums. We added six new positions, including three inspectors in our compliance department to keep up with the growth in the building industry, a procurement specialist to help TJ keep up with the ever growing hourly fees and the day to day purchases in our city, and animal control officer, and thank you for the new project manager in the mayor's office. The result of the carryover and the fixed expenses increasing going into the budget was there really was no money for the requests from our departments, especially for new positions. So Robin and I made some phone calls to businesses that we knew might be expanding in the fiscal year to find some new revenue. This included the new horse palace scheduled to open in the next few weeks in the Swan Ranch, the Derby Club expansion at DT's Liquor Mart on Ridge Road in Pershing, and a couple of other smaller opportunities. We also calculated the revenue the city would realize with the annexation of the North Range Business Park that's now eligible for with the recent business park that we brought in directly south of the North Range Business Park. Combined, these new revenue sources gave us the ability to add a few key positions that are most directly responding to the growth we're seeing in our city. Two of the new positions we added are in the compliance department to help with the ongoing challenge of cleaning up after our homeless population. We've been handling these challenges by grabbing folks from other departments to help with the daily cleanups. While I appreciate their willingness to help, we must acknowledge the need to have a dedicated team to handle the day to day homeless operations. This will definitely, we will definitely ask though for help when we have the bigger cleanups from other departments. We're asking for two additional police officers again this year, and I hope this will be an annual request as we've seen the need for specialty teams to combat trends in crimes. We've witnessed the successes when staffing has allowed targeted teams to go after criminals, successes in stopping injury, trafficking accidents based on crash data, finding and arresting the folks that were stealing catalytic converters in town and starting some partnerships in shoplifting. With our recent annexations and future large annexations, we need to keep adding to our department. One of, one part of making this request is the success our department has had recently in recruiting. I would not be budgeting for new officers if they were not able to hire them. And today we stand at a hundred and fourteen officers where we're authorized a hundred and thirteen, and I appreciate the governing body allowing the department to over hire a couple good officers when the opportunity occurred. The budget includes a new position in the traffic operations department. We've been adding miles of new roads that need to be managed, and it's my intention to bring the critical neighborhood speed ordinance before you this month. It requires radar signs that will need to be moved and batteries that will need to be changed on a regular basis. It's my hope the new position will cover the department's demands with the new critical neighborhood speed ordinance and help the department with the demands of our additional roadways. CRE has twelve divisions managed by Jason and Sam, and it takes a lot, a lot to ask for this high performing team. And the budget includes an office manager to help them manage the day to day paperwork and contracts for the twelve divisions. It's my hope the additional position will give Jason and Sam time to spend more time with strategic planning and coaching those twelve divisions. CRE is also proposed to get an aquatics maintenance tech and an events tech. Our CRE does so many great events and their request was for one more additional person to make sure the experience in our buildings is up to CRE standards. And Jason would like to combine two part time aquatics maintenance techs into a full time position. They would be trained also as a lifeguard to help on busy days and other essential services in the aquatic center. The last full time request is for a position in engineering. The lack of staff and the fact that our consulting groups in town are so busy has led to need for another staff engineer. It's our goal to improve the customer experience by reducing staff review times. Every development from housing to commercial industrial needs a review and can take a significant time for engineering staff. I don't see a slowdown in the future, and thus we need to beef up our engineering capabilities. We added a new part time code compliance officer to assist the departments with code enforcement issues. Bless you. These include enforcement of business licensing requirements by the city clerk, zoning requirements for planning department and other issues related to code enforcement. We've been struggling to find a mechanism to issue citations for those violating city ordinances that are civil in nature. This position probably will be housed in the compliance department. I would have liked to have included other general fund requests, but the funding wasn't there. But I will also share with you one position I think we're gonna have to address in the fiscal year is an arboretum. The legislature did not add funds or they did add funding in the state parks budget to impress the arboretum, but they failed to create a bill historic place. So what we're doing right now is we're working with state parks, hoping to bring an MOU very similar to the one that Kirk Goudy State Parks has to the governing body sometime in the near future. This MOU would answer for the legislature how partnership will be crafted to manage the arboretum. It would also, and we hope to do that in January, also help the arboretum how we manage it once the historic places is designated. The legislature has an expectation that the city will financially participate in this agreement. And I think the most likely plan for that financial participation would be for the city to provide an arborist for the historic trees. And so Rob and I will be looking as for that funding if in fact the legislature does create a state historic site on the arboretum. It only failed by one vote getting introduced, so two thirds of the legislature voted yes, short one vote. I think we have a good chance of making that happen. Another item I hope that we'll be adding, we'll be able to add to the budget in the new year would be a COLA for our employees. As we have for the last few years, Rob and I will propose a COLA to take effect in January if the revenues are there to support the increase. Our current COLA that we did this last year cost one million, nine hundred or ninety seven thousand dollars. So we have to make sure we have the budget to do that. Just to go over those numbers though, our top revenue sources are sales and use taxes at thirty six point five percent. Property taxes at twelve percent of our revenues. The direct distribution from the state is nine point two percent of our revenues. Gas and electric franchises are at seven point seven percent. Federal mineral royalties at three point eight. Historic horse racing has grown to three point eight percent. Severance taxes are three point two percent. Building permits are also three point two percent. Vehicle taxes are two point three percent. The gas tax provides two point two percent of revenues. I would like to note that Representative made a motion to increase the direct distribution of towns from the hundred and five million that was suggested by the appropriations committee to a hundred and forty six million and that passed in the legislature. And I would like to publicly thank Representative Zwanser for his understanding of the needs of local government and for the rest of the legislature that supported that request. Because of the uncertain nature of the funding above a hundred and twenty million dollars though, we've treated those dollars as non reoccurring and have identified one time projects to fund with those dollars. Some examples of those one time projects are the replacement of the roof on the fire headquarters building on Nineteenth Street, replacing the lights and poles that have been in service at the Dutcher baseball complex since nineteen seventy six, replacing the thirty year old boiler at the Aquatic Center, fully funding the Department of Justice's required ADA right away transition plan, additional funding for forestry right away tree removals, replacing the seven thermal imaging cameras in the fire department and upgrading the expiring copier contracts, just to name a few of the two million dollars in one time fundings that are in this budget. Our total general fund expenditures are also seventy one million, six hundred and forty seven thousand, six hundred and forty seven dollars. And the top expense category again this year is our payroll adding up to seventy two point nine percent of our total budget. Gas and electric utilities are at three point five percent of our expenses. Fleet fuel parts and labor are three point four percent. Support agencies, those outside agencies we help are three point one percent of our budget. The one time projects we referenced earlier are two point three percent. Professional services are at two percent. Our property and liability insurance costs us one point nine percent of our budget. Software for the computers and the hardware is one point seven percent. Our supplies are at one point five and the maintenance of city assets are one point two percent of the budget. Building a municipal budget is a challenging endeavor and having the expertise of our treasurer makes the experience feel possible, at least from my seat. We must predict revenues that are more than a year away from being collected, expenses, many of which we don't have control over, and a state legislature that decides a large portion of our revenues each year. We've done our best to predict each of these factors and have brought you a conservative balanced budget. We look forward to presenting the budget from each department in the upcoming work sessions over the next week and answering any questions you may have. Thank you.
Are there any questions for the mayor? Councilman Johnson?
Yes, can you explain how we get a percentage of an employee, especially like in planning development on page twenty nine, nine point four employees, public works administration, one point eight employees, youth alternative, four point eight. How do we get a percentage of an employee?
Madam Chair, that is because they're paid in various funds. So like youth alternatives, one person is paid partly in general fund and one is paid in youth alternative grants fund.
So yeah, so I guess with the nine point four in planning development, then would that be, is that the DDA personnel in that or how's that one broke up and planning development on a point four of an employee?
So Valerie, she's the office manager for both MPO, which is the transportation planning fund and the general fund, and then we also have Jeannie, I don't know her new name, Better, used to be Better. She is paid for, Shrenick, yeah, she's paid for by the Six Penny Fund and the general fund.
Thank you. Through you. Mr. Mayor, I had received a number of emails and visits on the arboretum position. I was just wondering if you could explain that a little bit better. So it is our intent to at some time, at some point to staff that position once we do what? I mean, are we waiting for the state or kind of give me a little something I can answer?
Mr. Seagrove, through you ma'am. I think you hit it on the head. It is our intent that when the legislature votes to create the arboretum as a state historic place that as part of the MOU, we will figure out the best way the state thinks we need to be a participant financially. My guess is that that will be an arborist. And so it would be our intention that we would, we'd look for and hire an arborist at that time. But at this point, we're still working on the MOU. Carly Anne and Christina from State Parks are crafting a a model of what that one might look like so we can bring it before this governing body. We're basing that a lot off of what we've done at Kirk Goudy State Park, so we have a very good working relationship at Kirk Goudy State Park. So I asked them to try to create something that would be based off of that successful example that we could bring to this governing body. And we'll see what they come up with as far as the best way they think we could participate financially. But because we have a great forestry department, we're good at that part of it. My suggestion to them would be that that probably would be the best way we could participate financially would be to hire a full time arborist to take care of the is it the eight hundred and seventy seven, I think it is historic trees or is it eleven hundred? Eight hundred, I think it's eight hundred and seventy seven historic trees. We would do that and then state forestry would handle the rest of the non historic trees that are on that site. So we think that that would be the best way and that would be our intention if in fact we can create this MOU and the state passes and creates this historic place, we'd want to step in at that time.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Through you, do we have any staff there today? Who's, who is managing? Who is taking care of the arboretum today? I truly don't know. I was out there a couple of weeks ago and there was activity. I just didn't know who they were.
Maybe we could save that question for when Parks and Recreation is here, but, but they're, they're sending some of their teams there. We have the friends of the Arboretum and Botanic Gardens who are volunteering to help. So there are folks doing it, but, but the truth of the matter is, is that the level of support it's getting now is not enough. We've lost a significant number of trees when nineteen, I think it was seventy four, when the transition went from the trees to the High Plains grasslands research. They quit watering those, those trees and a lot of the fruit trees died and things. So they are starting to replace some of those historic trees so that the fruit trees would still be there. They're trying to water them and keep them alive until we can come up with a permanent solution, which I hope is a state historic site. Kind of reminds me a little bit of the bake sales we did at the depot and stuff to try to keep the insurance and the lights on until the plan came through. I think that's kind of what's happening.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, through you, Mr. Mayor, I, my question is a follow up to Mr. Seagrove. I appreciate you bringing that up. I am also getting a lot of, a lot of the same context. So just to be clear then, Mr. Mayor, so your, your intent then, are you hoping that we would, we would try to fund that position? I'm just trying to get a sense of does this group need to, because I would support picking that, that position up certainly, but I'm hearing you say that maybe we need to wait until the MOU is done. So what, what would the timeline be for that? That MOU or should we be looking at, at, at funding this to start at July one?
Madam Chairman, through you. The legislature isn't going to meet until January and we won't have anything probably done until sometime in March. The hope would be that if the arboretum is successful, they would, they would make it immediately upon signature and not July first of the next year. But typically it's July first of the following year. The ordinance would become, or the law would, would become effective. So someplace between, you know, like April first and July first of next year, the, the ordinance, I guess what I call ordinances, the state law would become, would become effective. And that's the time I think that we would, we'd need to be there. And so that's most of the way or all the way through our fiscal year. And so I was at State Parks today and talked with some of their folks. They're working on the MOU right now. I would hope that in the next, you know, thirty to sixty days that we would have something that we could bring to this governing body that would talk about what that would look like. The legislature did put about three million dollars into the fund that we'll be able to use to help with the MOU that we can start the master planning of the arboretum so that we'll, we'll kind of know exactly how it would work. So in January, we'll, we'll have the MOU in place, we'll have the master plans, we can answer all the questions. The state of the buildings, what they're going to need, all of that stuff will be completed. So my, my gut would be that we wouldn't need to hire this position until like April to July of next year. And so that's why I didn't put it in the budget this time. I think we have plenty of time once the state acts to be able to fund this position and get them hired.
Councilman Roible?
Madam Chair, through you too. Mr. Mayor, we're on our, and I'm not sure if this is the right place, but we're on our, on our third year of self insurance.
Second year.
Second year. How is that performing?
I would say splendidly. We have a healthy group and we started with about one point seven million dollars in a reserve and this is like three point eight million today. So that number has grown. We're, we're well below the threshold of usage that you would think would be healthy. And with adding our wellness program, you know, I'm hoping that we'll be able to catch things earlier so they won't become as big of a problem in the future. So I think our self insurance program is going well. Our goal though would be to, to get to an eight million dollar reserves. We're almost halfway there. And I think it helps us have a better control over our future costs for both our employees and the city.
Any other questions for the mayor? Mr. Councilman Johnson?
If the mayor and or the city treasurer can cover our, on page fifty four for debt overview, if I'm reading this correctly, is it, is it still just the two parking garages that we have bonded or do we have any other bonds out there? And then on page fifty five with the forty two million, two sixty six, it says that's what we could request from the voters in general obligation bonds. In regards to funding on some of our other projects, had we, because we only have the two and it looks like we're making consistent payments on the garages, do we have any prospective projects that we're looking to maybe put out a bond in the future?
Madam Chairman, Mr. Johnson, you're right. Those are, that's the only debt that we have that is in a bond. I think it was three point six million dollars. Now it'll be just over three million dollars when we make the last payment in twenty twenty eight. All of our parking facilities would be paid off. I think the next, the next thing that I think we'd want to consider would be maybe building another parking garage in the eastern part of, of the town, close to the depot. That might be able to serve the depot, serve the, like the area around the Plains Hotel, that type of thing. That's the only thing that I really am tracking as far as maybe using a revenue bond again to, to pay for. I'm not tracking anything that we want to go to the voters for, for a general obligation bond.
Okay, because that was going to be my follow up is because the Civic Center came in kind of high on its estimates, you know, in regards to the complete overhaul of the place as well as a city hall because the buildings are kind of conjoined. And so I didn't know if that was something that we were potentially looking into on those two buildings. You know, as far as like a bond instead of a, a six penny request.
Madam Chairman, I'm guessing with the the environment right now for property taxes, I'm not sure a pound would, would do well at the ballot. So we have our spatial analysis that's being done on, on the municipal building right now. We'll have those results back here in the next couple of months. Was it September? I believe it is. We'll have that final and we'll have a good idea of what they suggest should be in this building, what that will cost. And that'll help us. Our next six penny is, you know, more than a year away still. So it's an option that we could put it on the six penny sales tax. But at least we'll be armed with the, the idea of who should be stationed in this building. Folks that maybe don't fit here, where would they go and how would we, how would we place them and what the cost of all that would be?
Any other questions for Mayor Collins? Okay.
Madam Chair, through you?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, when I'm looking at one time expenditures, your highlights, would there be your top three items that didn't make the cut on your wish list?
You referenced the page, Franklin.
Page ninety one.
Madam Chairman, through you. I don't remember the ones that didn't make the list, Mr. Escobal, to be honest with you. So I don't have any, any specific ones. And you know, some of those projects that, that may come to us in the future, you know, we have very healthy reserves right now that we could fund some of those projects. Should they, they come to that level. But I really like the fact that we've had some, some roofs on some buildings that have been around for a very long time. And we've been slowly over the last two or three years knocking those out. You know, I think they last twenty, twenty five years and you know, we've, we've replaced quite a few of them and we're taking care of some of the deferred maintenance that has just waited for, for so many years. And so Vicky and her team have done a good job of identifying the highest priorities on those. And then sadly, we've had to put some more money in for, you know, the removal of some of our urban canopy trees that have come to the end of their life expectancy. These last couple wins have really shown us the frailty of some of those trees. And while it breaks my heart, we did add, I think it was seventy thousand dollars. And then I think there was twenty five thousand dollars to help some folks who are financially challenged in their ability to pay for those. So trying to, try to make sure the right of ways stay safe.
Any other questions for Mayor Collins? If not, we'll move on to Treasurer Lockman.
Good afternoon, members of City Council. My name is Robin Lockman and I am the City Treasurer. The development of the city's budget, our largest and most significant policy document, is one of the most important yet ambitious responsibilities for me as City Treasurer. Not only are there very complex financial calculations involved to ensure that we capture all the necessary costs of running city government, but even more challenging is trying to help you as policymakers make sense of a lot of information. Each year I'm committed to ensuring transparency in our budgeting process and being able to effectively communicate the city's proposed annual spending plan to you. I also strive to help our citizens, especially those who do not have financial backgrounds, understand the budget by including understandable language and meaningful context so they can grasp the implications of their elected officials' financial decisions and priorities. We start working on the budget preparation in December, so the document before you is accumulation of a six to seven month long process from start to finish. The most difficult aspect of developing a budget for municipal government is trying to manage higher costs of doing business while simultaneously estimating how much revenue we will receive up to eighteen months into the future. Those revenues are critical in bridging the gap to allow us to keep up with the increased service demands. The mayor pointed out in his comments that we have very limited control over our revenues. Fortunately, we've had much higher revenues than anticipated, especially sales tax over the past three years. However, expenditures continue to rise even more than revenue in the face of persistent inflations. Therefore, we must find creative ways to get the most out of every dollar while also retaining our valuable employees and fairly compensating them. I believe the spending plan before you tonight, or tonight, this afternoon, reflects the work of a strong team of directors as well as a thoughtful consideration given by Mayor Collins to all of the budget requests made with the end goal of best supporting our community in the year ahead. Thankfully, as the mayor said in his comments, we were able to fund a lot of these requests in next year's budget proposal. Back in twenty twenty, for those of you who were serving on council back then, you might remember how we had to drastically cut the budget, not knowing how the pandemic would affect revenues. Fortunately, we have been blessed to have record breaking sales tax collections. And if you look at the chart on page seventy five in your budget book, you can see that the city has experienced an over six million dollar sales tax growth in just four years. Yet we need to remain cautious. As you know, over the past three months, sales and use taxes have declined year over year. This brings me to the quick discussion of the city's general fund reserves. The huge revenue increases we have seen over the past four years, coupled with lower levels of spending versus what was budgeted, have resulted in significantly higher reserve levels. If you turn to pages fifty eight and fifty nine in your budget book, you will see that at the end of the fiscal year, the city had two hundred and forty two days of unassigned general fund reserves. Our policy is a minimum of a hundred and twenty days. At the end of March of this year, that amount decreased to two hundred and twenty seven days of budgeted operating expenditures. The proposed city twenty twenty five budget includes the use of one million, three hundred and eighty six thousand, two hundred and seventy seven dollars of reserves. On page eighty nine of your budget book, I have outlined the use of those reserves, which includes the fire pension A loan payment that is earmarked in reserves as well as a second payment for the Axon body cameras for the law enforcement. We are also proposing to use nine hundred and eighty two thousand, nine hundred and seventy nine dollars, which was included for the payroll accrual needed to change the way we pay our non exempt employees. Instead of paying our employees the exact same amount every month, regardless of the number of days in the month, we are proposing to pay them for actual hours worked each month. We must do this to comply with our federal grant requirements as well as employment laws. Laramie County and the state of Wyoming shifted the way they paid their non exempt employees back in twenty eighteen for the same reason. On pages twenty five to twenty seven of the budget book, I included detailed information on why we need to do, do this and why we need to use reserves. If you haven't already, I highly recommend you read this section. Although the city's financial outlook has greatly improved, we are not out of the woods just yet. For the past two years, you've heard Mayor Collins and I warn that a recession is looming in the horizon. A key bond market signal of an upcoming reception has flashed red continuously for the longest time ever in history. The bond market signal is called the yield curve. The ten year, two year yield curve turned negative on July fifth of twenty twenty two and has remained inverted for six hundred and seventy three days. The yield curve is simply the different interest rates that the The yield curve is simply the different interest rates that the US government pays for different time periods. Short term bonds are now yielding more than longer maturities because investors expect interest rates to remain high in the short term as the Federal Reserve battles inflation. An inverted yield curve is a time honored signal of an upcoming recession. When the yield curve finally begins to uninvert, it is a signal that a recession is within one year based on what has happened over the past three recessions. Thankfully, because we have an appropriate level of reserves now, I am hopeful we would be able to weather this upcoming storm without drastic measures that we were forced to undertake back in 2020. I would now like to focus on expenditure increases in the proposed budget. The mayor has covered most of the significant changes, but I'd like to add some little bit of additional information on payroll increases. As you know, over the past three years, rising costs and supply constraints have presented challenges to us in the same way they presented challenges to households and small businesses. A major rising cost includes our employees, which make up 73% of general fund budget. Our payroll costs in the proposed fiscal year 25 budget are a little over 4.5 million more than they were in the improved for fiscal year 24, 20, 20, 24 budget. I have highlighted the reasons for this increase on pages 24 to 28. Over the past year, the city council has recognized the importance of investing in the city's most important asset, our employees, who work for us day in and day out to ensure the successful delivery of city services. As the mayor said, this was done by offering some relief to our employees through a 3% cost of living increase this year for all permanent, full time and part time employees. We have also been able to update the city's non-uniformed employee compensation plan where we now have a step system similar to our firefighters and police officers. Employees can now look at their position salary range and be able to determine where they are within the scale based on how many years they've worked for the city, full time, both in their current position and any other position. As well as relevant outside experience and know where their potential is for the position. This will be, need to be evaluated each year as budget allows, but having a well established salaries range and step system for positions provides a transparent framework for our staff to know how their position fits within the organization and provides a yardstick by which employees can measure past and future advancement opportunities. In closing, the financial position of the city of Cheyenne is strong and stable. But we also need to be mindful of the possible slowing of the economy. However, Cheyenne does have some exciting economic development happenings in the works as well. With this said, I feel the allocation of available revenues should be focused on maintaining current levels of service as well as continuing to advance your priorities. I am confident that the 2025 recommended budget achieves both goals and I look forward to the discussion of this budget proposal over the next month and a half. Thank you.
Are there any questions for Treasurer Lockman? Councilman Johnson?
Yeah, if you can turn to page 80. And so looking at the federal mineral royalties, it looks like they have it all the way through 2028. And I know that it was brought up at one of the elected officials dinners that a lot of why we're probably seeing decreases on our taxes coming in, you know, since pretty much January or, you know, we've seen this line kind of fall over the last few months. A lot of, from what I've heard is that people are waiting for the next election to make determinations in regards to these types of entities. And so are we looking at, you know, potentially after the election, you know, if this is going to continue to decrease or? Cause Craig looked at it from 2028. So that's how we're basing our values is strictly off of Craig. And then on the page 85, I guess we're expecting a decrease of 2.3% of $37,000 in regards to gas taxes. And just kind of going over this, can you, do we have a reason why that I was missing on this, on why we were seeing a decrease in gas tax?
Madam Chair, through you. So gas taxes are based on selling gallons of, of gas. I mean, it's not based on the price of gas. It's about based on the quantity. And we have just been seeing over the past six months or so, less gas being purchased. And so I, we kind of went with what we were looking at fiscal year 24's actual revenues. And so that's why.
So we really don't know why, as far as the amount of fuel being purchased, we don't really know.
No, I, I assume it might be this, you know, the economy slowing down a little bit.
People like traveling and things like that, that it's, and then.
Truck drivers, I mean.
Okay. Yeah. That you could see less demand in those markets. Okay. Thank you.
Councilman Johnson, I actually believe that the legislature also is attributing some of that to electric vehicles. Yeah. Any other questions for Treasurer Lockman? Well, thank you so much. And thank you for all of your hard work to put this together. We appreciate what a really quality product you provide for us. And we look forward to hearing from the police and fire department tomorrow, same time, same place. So we'll see you tomorrow at noon. Thank you for being here today and the meeting's adjourned.